For our roundtable to discuss sanitation hauling in Cobb County. This meeting is very important to us to make sure that we have constructive communication with respect to an ordinance that has been put forward. And I'm grateful that we have representation from so many of our haulers here in the county. And I've had the opportunity to meet, if not all of you, most of you when I walked in. And as I shared, I'm looking forward to us having a constructive conversation. And I think that begins with prefacing, you know, further discussion by sharing that all of our commissioners have shared their support for maintaining our current haulers as we address the issues that we have with sanitation in the county. Our code amendment package is provided to the Board of Commissioners about at least once a year, maybe twice, sometimes we've had more rotations. And sometimes our code is initiated by commissioners. Sometimes it's initiated by staff to respond to needs that are within the county. And this is one that our commissioners received and began providing feedback prior to a work session that occurred last week. I can tell you there was no commissioner that articulated support for having one hauler per district. We have all articulated our support for seeing how we can maintain support of our current small businesses and new small businesses as we try to provide response that can help ameliorate a lot of the challenges that have been brought forward to the county, which I know have been present at least for three or four years since I served on our board. But our director shared with us during our work session that some of these issues just began after the economic downturn in 2011 and have just persisted. And so the reason we're here today is to figure out how we can work through these issues. The way this room is set up as a square table is our pseudo roundtable is so we can have joint discussion and communication about how we can work together to figure out how we can move forward. So with that, our director, and I just want to make sure I get our director's department correct, we modified it recently, so it's Director of Sustainability Waste and Beautification. Dr. Jenkins provided a memo to the Board of Commissioners, begging us for our feedback with respect to a work session where we talked about the code amendments for Cobb County, and that included the amendment on waste collection. He shared the reasons why we actually started to look at making modifications to our code, and then he recapped the suggestions that the commissioners shared during that meeting. And I'm going to share that with all of you who didn't have the opportunity to look at the work session or reminding some of you who are there. The category of issues that prompted the proposed amendments are, first, that residents who have no haulers wanted service on their street or cul-de-sac, and they have not had assistance available from Cobb County. For those of you in hauling or who may live on a cul-de-sac know that it's not always easy to move a big truck down our cul-de-sacs. And we've had many complaints from those that live on those streets that no one was willing to provide them service. And so that's an issue that was brought to our attention. There were also some other streets that did not have a lot of success in finding a reliable hauler. The second issue was that residents have had one choice of a hauler in some communities, and they have not been satisfied with them, and they have not received any help from Cobb County government. The third issue was that residents who do not want different garbage haulers, excuse me, residents do not want different garbage haulers driving through their neighborhood multiple days each week. And again, felt as if Cobb County was not assisting. Some residents, and this has happened more frequently, many of our residents have been missing garbage or recycling pickups for consecutive weeks, and again, have been very frustrated that Cobb County has not stepped into ameliorate the issue beyond reaching out to the hauler. And finally, we've had illegal dumping across the county, as many of you may see, to increasing litter. And I have seen on multiple occasions, as may some of you, people that actually go to commercial retail sites and get rid of their hauling that way. I've seen some people go to some of our public facilities of the county and get rid of their personal waste. And this may be attributed to the fact that residents are not required to have residential garbage service. Based on the issues above, and with majority consensus of the board, staff took to drafting a code to help address these issues. When that code was shared with the board during the work session, the following concerns and suggestions were shared by members of the Board of Commissioners. First is that there are an abundance of issues with having no mandatory waste collection service. Two, there is a need to ensure that every house has waste collection service. Three, we have opportunity to identify waste collection complaints and hauler issues that have particularly been ramping up since 2020. We have opportunity to identify if the no mandatory waste collection service provision that is allowed by the current code is correlated with the dumping issue that we are seeing grow throughout the county. Commissioners asked staff to please schedule meetings and engage haulers to allow joint development with staff and the haulers for the solid waste code. That commissioners wanted to work with our businesses in finding us a lead. We also asked for Cobb County to work with Cobb DOT to develop and install instructional signage, no parking signs, or no standing signs in communities where haulers cannot access trash carts easily on collection days. Next, multiple haulers are servicing districts and zones in the county, and that was recognized as something we wanted to support. We wanted a code amendment framework that addresses the list of issues, the five issues that I shared at the top of this meeting. We all recognize that accommodating small haulers is vital. We recognize that we need a backup option to protect residents if a hauler must be removed from a zone or area via haulers being on a retainer option. We know to support that type of service, that we would need to implement some type of infrastructure, environmental, or sustainability fee. We also wanted to institute measures to ensure that the entire group of haulers is not penalized for one bad actor. We also recognize that the need to address waste collection in any part of the county should be supported by county administrators and elected officials. When we had our work session and the commissioners shared their feedback with respect to the code, we did not get to these other issues. And for our haulers that are here today, we would love to have your feedback on these additional matters. Cobb County is supposed to have a mandatory provision of curbside recycling for all of our haulers, but we've had complaints from residents that some haulers have not been providing recycling service. We have some recycling boxes in the county at different sites that we tell residents that they can use for their personal household recycling. Some of those recycling areas have amassed so much recycling that it became an eyesore for the community, and we've had to remove some of those sites, I believe. I'm looking around, and I realize I didn't do what I wanted to do, and that was for everyone to introduce themselves. I'm going to get through this, and then we're going to just backtrack a bit, have everyone introduce themselves. But the next two issues that we've had is we recognize that there are disabled and senior citizens in the county, and we wanted to have a mandatory offer of side door or back door service for those residents that can be provided at additional, excuse me, no additional charge for those who are on a fixed income. We've also asked for staff to address a mandatory offer of bulk item pickup from garbage service haulers, and this may be done without having to contract with a separate entity. Some residents expressed they are willing to pay additional costs for this service, and they are okay with their hauler subcontracting out this type of junk removal service. Those were the issues identified. Please let us know if there are other issues that you see on the road that we should be addressing. As we talk about how we can address our complaints, this is opportunity for us to address opportunities that you may see that we just have not had the opportunity to discuss because we have never been in this type of setting together. Our next steps, and I appreciate Dr. Jenkins' initiative with this, was to organize a meeting with our haulers so that we can get your feedback. And I'm grateful that we have representation from the majority of our commissioners who are here. And as we start introductions, I'm going to start with them, starting with our Cobb County Vice Chair Commissioner Burrow, and then we'll go around the table.
Joanne Burrow, District 3, Cobb County Commissioner.
Kelly Gamble, District 1, Commissioner.
Jonathan Jenkins, Director for Sustainability Waste and Beautification.
Joseph Labor, Owner, Justice Judge.
Kirk Johnson, Owner, Junk Box.
Steve Rogers, West Coast Attorney.
Ryan Moore, Customer Disposal Service, also representing some independent haulers that are in your association.
Clark Stumpf, and I represent the Independent Garbage Haulers in Cobb County, Organization of Independent Haulers.
Charlie Flay, Sea Green Services.
Steve Edwards, Waste Management.
Brian Stolvey, Owner of S&amp;B Junk Removal Demolition.
Shannon Stolvey, S&amp;B Junk Removal Demolition.
Angie Bakyarow, Bee Green Services.
Andy Milticaro, Bee Green Services.
Todd, People on Factress Sanitation.
Johnny Barnes, Factress Sanitation.
Kimberly, Independent Disposal.
David Swearingen, Trash Taxi.
John Swearingen, Trash Taxi.
Eric McAdon, GOF.
Jackie McMorris, County Manager.
Detective Bill Rollin, Cobb County Attorney.
All right, very good. My Assistant Janine Ramsey is here. If we need to pass her on the mic, she will help us with that today. Debbie Blair, Deputy County Attorney.
Jatton Gibson, Director of Public Services.
Kimberly White, Division Manager, Sustainability Waste and Beautification.
Thank you. Thank you, Cobb County. Thank you. Can't forget that. Well, thank you again for all of you being here today, and just want to make sure that I'm being truthful to our agenda. So we spoke about the five major issues and concerns suggested and identified by the Board of Commissioners, and this is our opportunity to get any feedback from those who are here around our table. And before I do that, Dr. Jenkins, I want to, I'm checking with you to see, did I miss anything that you'd like to add?
Not really, Chairwoman, other than, I think, just to go into a little bit more detail, where the Chairwoman said that all haulers will be given an opportunity to provide, continue to provide service in all areas of the county, there still is probably a need for some type of zoning related to, you know, partitioning the county. And this zoning, as I explained to the Chairwoman, is more based on being able to address issues that are, that come into our office about a certain hauler. So as it currently is, if a hauler has, say, 20,000 customers or whatever, say, in District 3, and 2,000 of those customers, you don't have, you know, gave complaints, then we would be, if I, if by our current ordinance, we would, we could suspend that hauler's permit or revoke that hauler's permit. And that would affect the hauler from being able to collect in the entire county. With zoning, we would only be looking at, say, restricting their residential service agreement for that district or for that zone, and they still would be able to continue to, you know, serve the customers in the other areas that aren't having any issues. So I did want to add that to what the Chairwoman said earlier.
As a consideration.
As a consideration.
Thank you. Very good. And Kimberly, did you want to add anything else? Again, I know we didn't discuss recycling much at our last Board of Commissioners work session, and that was an issue that has come up multiple times prompting a work session. If you can help me in using that mic there, everyone can hear you.
Okay, yes. So recycling, we weren't really able to speak a lot about that at our session. So we get calls every day at Keep Cobb Beautiful in reference to recycling, people wanting us to recycle more in the county, or not being able to recycle at all, you know, curbside. As was mentioned a little while ago, that we did have some recycling drop-off locations. And due to, you know, whatever the issues were with them being able to recycle curbside, a lot of people were using the recycling drop-off locations. In heavy areas where people are really, really adamant about recycling, which is a good thing, you know, but they were using the recycling drop-off locations a lot. And what was happening was that the company that was supposed to be picking it up, we just, they could not keep up with the volume. And so it did become an eyesore. And so, you know, that, we had to remove some of those locations. So we are working on trying to get some additional locations up and running to really try to meet the demand that Cobb County residents, you know, deserve really, and what they're, what they're asking for, as far as being able to drop off recycling materials. And just so, you know, that everybody knows, I just want to give a little context to that. You see, recycling, you know, it ebb and flows, right? So you have some times where the market is really high, and, you know, that material is doing really well, and then other times where it goes down. Here in the southeast, though, we are, you know, really well positioned for material to be used for the items that we need it to be used for domestically, actually. So we have a very strong market in the southeast to handle material, and we don't have enough of it, we're not collecting enough of it, to handle the demand for it, for that type of material. And so one of the things that are, one of the intentions from, at least from, you know, my team, was to come up with some solutions to help people be able to recycle the material that they want to and that they expect to recycle here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'd like to open it up for any of our haulers or parts in representation of haulers, if you'd like to address any of the issues that have been shared thus far, or any others. This is your opportunity. Yes, ma'am. We need somebody to do it.
Right. I'll go there.
Okay.
And you will bear with me.
Sure.
So first, what I just heard regarding recycling is that Cobb County had recycling drop-offs and couldn't even manage those, but wants to now try to manage the entire hauling for the community, which I find to be ridiculous. I will admit and acknowledge that I too, as a homeowner, have had many of the problems that you've named. That does not mean that the solutions presented, one, will work, two, are proven to work, or three, aren't overreaching in their attempts at possibly hindering other businesses in the process of implementing procedures under the guise of facilitating Cobb County's residents. As I stated, my name is Shannon Stolvey. My husband and I started S&amp;B Junk Removal Demolition right before COVID in 2019. However, due to hard work and the contributions of Cobb County residents, we are here doubling every year and proud to say that our home and our work, both of us, are in Cobb County. We primarily service contractors, real estate agents, and home investors or house flippers, as well as remediation companies in providing demolition and post-demolition services. Our clients are all over Georgia. We can't say that we're only going to serve part of Cobb County, that we're only going to be in Cobb County. I understand that some of the smaller haulers do only do Cobb County, though. I understand they only do Cobb and Cherokee County, though. And these are considerations that have to be given to these smaller ones that only have the ability to operate in Cobb and Cherokee. When we formed our company, our primary goal that we looked at was to employ displaced veterans, homeless people, and to give other ones job opportunities. This, by natural growth, also became our ability to give people a second or third chance who have criminal records. Therefore, every one of our employees right now is a veteran, was homeless, and/or has a criminal record. We have already put three back in the workplace that have left us and have started their own business or are working elsewhere, excuse me, while the others with us have now had roofs over their heads for three years. We have nine individuals working for us from age 19 to 54. They show up to work every day. They usually meet us at 7:30 in the morning to go to work and don't get home till after 6 o'clock at night. This is regardless of what's going on. So when, I understand, larger trash haulers aren't able to get people to work, we are doing what we can to hire people who want to work and who are working. And what's wonderful is, we love our job, and they tell us every day how grateful they are and how amazing the job is. So I did a little homework for today and found that just under the Secretary of State of Georgia, there are 1,516 registered entity names that include the word junk, and 650 which include the word trash. Now, that includes all counties. It includes terminated and administratively dissolved, and ones that do not perform any kind of junk or hauling jobs. However, of the 61 pages of junk and 26 pages of trash entity names, only 21 of those currently active were formed pre-COVID. They are still operating, and they are still growing. Of those, 22, not otherwise dissolved, were formed in 2020. 23 were formed in 2021, and 13 were formed already in 2022. So there are 79 total junk removal businesses with the name trunk or trash registered. That does not include companies whose names does not include junk or trash, or who are not formally registered with the Secretary of State, for our population of well over 750,000 people in Cobb County. If our junk servicing companies are not permitted to use the Cobb County facilities, then several possibilities arise. One, as evidenced by Dixie, which is indefinitely closed, our private stations will not be able to handle the burden of overflow. The private stations, who have already been forced to materially increase their prices since COVID, will be forced to further increase their prices on the account of the additional overflow that they will receive. We all know these costs will be passed on to the small businesses. This will then allow the larger companies here today to receive an unfair benefit of lower prices and guaranteed more efficient disposal. The private stations will also benefit from an oligopoly, able to indiscriminately increase prices against those smaller companies, more than they may be actually necessary, again forcing smaller businesses out of business and unnaturally permitting a level of unfair competition in the marketplace. As of note, also is the fact that several of the private Cobb County transfer and waste stations already do impose restrictions on who can dump in their facility. Thus, several of our smaller haulers already cannot do there. Similarly, that means that these companies that are larger, that want to create additional restrictions at the Cobb County level, already have places we are not allowed to dump. Therefore, again, the larger companies are getting multiple benefits to the direct, permanent hurt of the smaller. There are also some of us who go to every county to perform. Thus, if Cobb County starts restricting its services, we can only speculate that the surrounding counties would do the same, whether it's due to retribution or the fact that they can't take our own county's overflow, which is not fair for them. So we have Dixie that's closed, we have Mableton and Fulton, we have a couple in Dougsville, then of course, near us even, we personally service Cherokee, Bartow, Paulding, Fulton, Dallas, Cartersville, Lawrenceville, Fayetteville, Forsyth, and go to those dumps. Those, as well as the Cobb County transfer stations, know the smaller hauler drivers by name. They are the ones who recognize us because we are the ones who are there on a daily basis providing them with revenue. The fact that since 2020, i.e. COVID, the number of registered businesses engaging in a form of junk or hauling removal services has more than tripled, it is clear that Cobb County residents are taking advantage of the current marketplace to make a living. Thus, these people who would not have a job, who would not be able to find a work, are finding a work by creating these companies. They are creating jobs for third parties. To take away our residents' pursuit of happiness is directly contrary to the foundation of So as I stated, these are the people hiring the veterans, the homeless, the individual with criminal records, who by law or policy cannot or will not be hired by larger companies. So again, taking away the ability of the smaller companies to do business will deprive these other individuals of their ability to make a positive contribution to our county. Judge Schuster worked hard to instill in our county the importance of hiring veterans and individuals needing a second chance. These are the companies that are fulfilling that goal. Note also, it is not just hauling companies that are affected by these attempts at changes. Plumbers, electricians, remodelers, contractors, landscapers, remediators, movers, and companies that solely rent dumpsters would also materially and detrimentally be impacted by such measures. Our county wants to grow and prosper. We want our county to grow and prosper. Yet, the proposal would place an additional drain on our resources, deprive individuals of employment opportunities, thus reducing the actual taxes collected, and substantially reduce competition, or even worse, result in oligopolies and monopolies on services. Each of these would result in a greater inflation and reduced growth on our county. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your feedback. And again, I can't reiterate enough that it is not the intent of anyone on this board to reduce the number of haulers as is presented. We could certainly understand the passion of the haulers when you see that code being presented. And so I appreciate all that you did to let us know the kind of impact it would have on our service providers and those connected to it. So I appreciate all of that feedback. There was something that you stated, though, that was not aware, that I was not aware of, and I wanted to get your clarification on, or perhaps Jonathan's clarification on. Did you provide that Cobb County is not allowing some haulers to utilize our dumps? Or this private dump?
The private haulers, the private places are only allowing the high-end commercial home trash services just to dump in their location, so not by contributing. So we are already restricted, and they are already provided with a benefit over the smaller companies.
I understand.
Thus, Cobb County initiating the same would be disastrous.
Understood. Thank you. Appreciate your feedback. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Did she speak for everyone?
I was trying.
So are there, yes, John.
Yeah, John Swearingen.
If we can give him the mic, John, just so we can ensure everyone hears.
Thank you. John Swearingen with Trash Taxi. A couple of questions on the recycling. Can you give us an idea of how many complaints or concerns come through the office on a weekly, monthly, or quarterly basis? Again, we've got roughly, I don't know, 200,000 single-family homes in Cobb County, so we'll just kind of use that as a, as a reference. But how many complaints or concerns or questions would you say come through the office on
I was going to say discounting COVID. I would say it's probably between 150 to 200 a month, give or take, as far from a recycling standpoint. Kimberly?
Excuse me, one moment. If I, this is a public meeting because we have a quorum of commissioners, but the intent of this meeting was to have a roundtable and constructive conversation with our haulers. I'm grateful that the public is also passionate about these issues and is here, but I'm going to ask that you please not provide commentary that interrupts us having a constructive
ask that you please not provide commentary that interrupts us having a constructive solution brought forward to address these issues. Thank you.
That, that, okay, so the amount of inquiries that we get, it ebbs and flows, right? So it depends on what's happening in the market and just in general. So for example, as Dr. Jenkins mentioned, prior to 2020, we were getting maybe 150, you know, inquiries or complaints. But obviously during the pandemic in 2020, that number shot way up, right? And then it comes down some, but it will go back up as well depending on what's happening. You know, obviously, we live in a global community, so when things happen anywhere in the world, it does trickle down and affect how recycling is managed or handled anywhere, you know, in the world, including Cobb County. So to answer your question, I wish we had one other person here that could have given us, you know, the exact amount of calls that come in. But we get emails as well, but those emails are mixed in with other emails just about regular trash complaints, so they're not separated out. But I would say I have a total right now of about 600 emails that are a mixture of recycling and trash complaint issues and a special inbox for that. But we get phone calls and emails, and then in general, our crew leaders that are out trying to service the recycling drop spots will get inquiries as well there.
And the reason I ask that, just to help us understand the scope of the problem, because as I look at the haulers here, the private haulers and the public haulers, you know, collectively, we probably haul 95% of the residents, the people in this room touch 95% of the community or maybe 100% of the community. I know we all offer recycling service, so I guess I'm not sure why we have a disconnect from our residents. We're all required to provide it, but help us understand that gap.
Well, currently, where our ordinance reads, it says mandatory offer. And what some residents complain about is that the service is offered, but it's at such and such rate. So if it's $30, say, a month for them to pay for trash, and then their garbage hauler says that, well, there's gonna be an additional $20 a month if you want recycling, then the complaint is that that's too much. We don't want to pay that much. And even head residents say that they think some haulers do that just so they don't have to haul, you know, or collect recycling.
Oh, that's, yeah, if I could address that. You know, when we started our business in '04, we had to buy the garbage trucks. And then as soon as we started working in Cobb County, we had to buy the recycling trucks. And truthfully, if people aren't aware, if you're not aware, you know, I've got the same truck, same insurance, the same fuel. I have to have acreage to park the truck, the same maintenance, the same administration. Really, the only benefit I get as a hauler is I'm diverting a little bit of trash, maybe a couple, 10 or 20 pounds per month is going to a recycling center instead of a landfill. It's different for me. I have to route to that. But it's the bill. I don't have to send out a separate bill for recycling, so I save a few dollars there. But we have so many of the almost exact same expenses that I think sometimes residents feel that, I mean, we'll haul anything. We're garbage people. That's what we do. I mean, if there's a hurricane, you call GML or Waste Management, they'll go clean it up. If there's a flood, you know, they're there. These folks around this room can haul trash. They can solve problems. But any one of us, we've got these huge investments in equipment and the recycling market. I think 20 years ago or when we started, we would get $25 for a truck or $50 for a truck from the recycling facility. Today, we're paying processing fees that are right up there with disposal fees. So, you know, we try to communicate to our residents, it's not that we don't want to recycle, but we cannot absorb all that cost, equipment, crews, fuel, labor. I mean, it's the same thing as hauling trash. So I think it's important that we really uncover the issue, is it that it's not available or the customers just don't want to pay for it? Because that, I believe, is the issue with a lot of the concerns. They want to recycle, and we want to provide the recycling service, but I can't do it for free. We just can't. Excuse me. I'm choked up. No. So I think that's the first challenge. As the recycling processing fees increased, you know, certainly, we all experienced processing costs that we had to pass along to the customer, and then all the other operating expense. You need a commercial driver for the big truck, you know, you gotta have your laborers and all the other things that I mentioned. So the alternate, really, for people who want to recycle, and, you know, we grew up with a dad like that. I mean, we'd slept down to the market on Saturday and he had all his stuff. We would bring all of our stuff to recycle because, growing up, we couldn't afford the service or there wasn't the service offered. But, so I think the county, to help manage those people that don't want to pay for it, we've got to figure out a way to fix those recycling centers. And again, the people around this table, they can fix that. These people can do anything if the relationship is, if the fee structure is right and the service level is right. We can recycle the drop-off stations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. I can tell you, I lived in another community with an HOA, and there was a perception that our hauler would not provide recycling. And I don't know where that disconnect was. It wasn't until I started delving into the code more as we got complaints that I learned that our haulers had to at least offer it. So I think also, a lot of it is just a lack of communication or awareness from our residents that the service can be provided so they can at the very least ask for that service. But the cost issue recognizably could be another barrier. Do we have any other comments or feedback? Mr. Elliott?
I was just gonna say one quick thing. And I want to piggyback off of the discussion that we were just having about recycling. Everyone is absolutely correct, right, at this table here. One of the things I want to bring up is that I think there is, there needs to be more communication or more education with the general public about what to recycle and how to recycle. We, you know, in the second quarter of 2021, due to a lot of people trying to recycle curbside and drop-off, and the businesses, commercial kind of coming back, right, from that 2020, you know, law, there was a huge increase in being able to get material, and the market actually reflected that. So in quarter two of 2021, you know, that was probably the highest, you know, I guess, it was the best time to collect cardboard, and it was being shown. And I mean, there's a lot of reports out there that you can look up that will show you that. And so I think what's important is that if we do have clean material that we can recycle and be able to capture this material, I think it will help, you know, recycling in general and just the market, right? So just being able to be on the same page with what we can accept here in Cobb County and, you know, what we can recycle and what we can move, I think it's helpful.
Parks, did you have a comment?
Parks Huff, on behalf of the independent haulers of Cobb County. And I just, listening to the dialogue here, first off, you said at the beginning constructive, and I think that's overriding on everyone's part. We want to have a constructive dialogue, and we are. The idea of the four exclusive zones, I think, is dead, and so we don't need to, you know, go back and kind of belabor that point. So I think to John's point, we want to identify what the actual issues are. And really, the biggest thing that I wrote down is dialogue and communication. And Chairwoman, you mentioned it too, and you mentioned it, is not just communication between the county and the haulers. That obviously, I mean, I'm sure it's great, but I'm sure it also could be better. There's no communication that can always use some improvement. But communication to the customer about how the reality is, is that recycling costs the same as picking up trash. And so they're frustrated because they don't understand that and the communication of that, communication how to recycle, the communication of where these recycling locations are. I didn't know that we've got one at Loch Mountain Park until I drove there and saw it, but I, you know, I probably missed a fly or somewhere in my water bill or something, but communication could always be better on that respect. And also, to your point, it's not just, you know, the customer and the hauler, it's It's also, you know, do we need to look at transfer stations? And I'll, Commissioner Gamble mentioned that I'm here as, usually as a zoning attorney. But, you know, when we come forward with a trash transfer station for zoning, no one wants a transfer station. No one ever wants a transfer station. But the reality is, is that for your residential garbage to be picked up, these guys got to take it to a transfer station. So the answer shouldn't be no transfer stations, no additional transfer stations in Cobb County, but why don't we find the appropriate location for them to be? So it's not, I mean, it's a complex issue, and I think, talking to my client, the best thing to do is to have a dialogue in a committee-type setting where we've got representatives from the county, representative from the haulers, and representatives from the consumers that we can talk about the issues. And also, to John's point too, understanding exactly what the complaints are, and maybe taking some time to catalog the complaints very carefully and understand what they are, and the communication back to the haulers too. Like if someone's complaining about, I only have one service in my neighborhood, it actually may not be the haulers. It may be that their HOA contracted with a hauler, and they're mad about who the HOA picked, maybe because of some service with the pool, because there's always HOA, there's always another issue. So they may be upset about something there, and when they, even if it's not exclusive, where the HOA maybe doesn't have the right, but if they contract with someone for, you know, that hauler to have a certain rate, it naturally, you know, fills up the whole neighborhood, and other haulers don't want to come in if they're only serving one or two people. So that may be an HOA issue, not even a hauler issue. And if you've got an area where someone says they can't get any hauler to come, you know, let's put that on a GIS map and communicate that back to the haulers as a group so that they can identify where there are gaps in service, and they can collectively look at it because they want to serve more people too. So that communication back would be helpful. So, you know, I think our overriding statement is, we want to make sure that problems are addressed, and that when the county gets complaints from county residents, that they have an answer, and that we are helping the county answer that question in finding solutions to the problems that are persistent.
Thank you. Appreciate that feedback.
If I could just pick up on what Parks said, and I'm with the, Trash Taxi's with the independent haulers, and we've, of course, talked about this issue. And one of the, one of our suggestions is, you know, we need some time to work through some of these concerns. And when I think of a big company and how they resolve problems, they set action plans, corrective action plans, and they have, you know, accountability, follow-up, and so on and so forth. And I think one of the things we should consider as a path forward, and this is whether it's recycling or trash, let's just say it's a recycling issue. Something comes into your office. And if, Dr. Jenkins, if you know, you've got the people around this room can address your problem, I mean, they're, we're right here. If we get an email from Brian or GFL, if Eric gets an email, or Charlie, or anybody with a customer with a concern, you should expect a response from any one of us within, I don't know, 48 hours or 24 hours to see, can we fix this? Can someone out here fix this? You know, if they say, Steve, are you in a block with this customer, or can you validate this? This is in your service area, Brian, you know, we're gonna know because we know our customers, and we know there's a lot of customers out there sometimes that you're not always getting the full story or the straight story. And number one is, we always have to validate. Many of us have cameras on our trucks because, you know, we get the calls about the missed pickup, so we have to validate that. And once customers hear that, well, you know, pick me up next week, it's fine. But, or they haven't paid their bill, or they pay their bill at the last minute and then it doesn't get processed through the system and it doesn't show up on the route sheet. So sometimes it's something simple where we can call and take care of the customer. But if we're not getting the feedback from you, other than reading it in the paper, with that perspective, we'd love to hear from you, from your office, here's the issues. Can somebody address this and get back with us in 48 hours? So we have a response from the county. Is service available? Is it a billing issue? Is it a, I mean, who knows? Renters, we all have problems with renters and trash cleanouts, and they're behind on their bill and the landlord. I mean, that's just part of our business. But, so that's my number one suggestion for the recycling. We have to try to fix that, or we can tell the customer, hey, did you know there's a drop center here if it's not in any of our areas? Do you know there's a drop center here that you can get it to? Or an independent provider can carry it to you. But the second thing, and Parks mentioned this too, was with the waste service, is I think one of the ideas that we can provide the county, and I can't take credit for this, I'm gonna give it to Brian, but a heat map of who is where. So you can, is there really no other hauler in the area, or is it, well, they don't like that price? You know, there's haulers out there, but, you know, we may have a pricing structure that is not suitable, so then they complain about lack of availability. And again, we're competing for work every day. We want to work. We want to take care of our business. We want to serve our customers. We don't want to leave trash on the ground. We want to have drivers every day. We want to have helpers, guys that show up every day at 4:30, rain or shine, heat or cold, to come pick up your, that's what this group does. And, you know, we've got the labor challenges, just like the county does, like every business does. We're working through those daily as independent businessmen. You know, that's not gonna go away. We're gonna continue to work through that. But I think the recycling issues and the trash issues, if, and again, these guys, especially, again, the big haulers, you guys are data junkies. If you have data, if we have data and facts, we can address, and I think we can have some good solutions and help make the county look good, frankly. We should be the best. Cobb County's great. We've lived here for almost 30 years. But I think we can fix this without disrupting what we have. I think we got to take a look at it, really understand what the facts are, what the problems are. The folks around this table can work together to address and support the county, and I see a win-win down the road on this.
Excellent. Great.
Real quick, John, just for a point of clarification, because typically, when we get calls saying that, you know, we can't find a hauler, Sandra or myself will provide, I guess, the contact numbers for the haulers that have permits to collect in Cobb. So that's not necessarily calling, you know, you or your brother David, or calling Brian specifically. Are you saying moving forward that you want it directed to your level versus the customer service line?
I think maybe an email communication from your office to the key members, and you could say you provided them a list, but again, it sounds easy for some, but others, you know, making those phone calls are not, they're an obstacle for some reason.
Understood. And I think on the second point you mentioned, you know, like you said, for the bigger guys, they have a bunch of data. But will the smaller haulers, you know, be able to provide us, you know, with, I guess, basically, a listing of all of their customers so we can, you know, GIS overlay that to be able to see where they're located, to be able to, you know, to generate this heat map you're talking about? So I'm just curious, is that something you think that all of the haulers will be able to provide?
Good afternoon, everyone. Brian Warren here with Custom Disposal Service. So we've talked about this issue for many hours in the last few weeks. I have not communicated anything to our customers yet, but I'm getting several calls and emails about the situation, and I'm just waiting to see how things go before I communicate what's going on. So we got to get to the bottom of it. So Mr. Jenkins, Dr. Jenkins, I think, and we're just now organizing again, we're reviving the Independent Harvest Haulers Association of Cobb County. It's been kind of dormant for about 20 years, but it is now registered, and we're just now organizing. But I think it's very possible, if we all join as a group, that we can find out our service areas. We'd like to collect data. How many people do we employ? How many service, how many customers are we servicing? And yes, exactly, find out all those service areas so that we can help the county. Many years ago, in '08, Mr. Charles Slade here and a representative from Waste Management Many years ago, in '08, Mr. Charles Slade here, and a representative from Waste Management, and myself, we served on a solid waste planning committee for the city of Milton, Georgia, when they were forming a city. So, they were very wise to work on this for six months, as they presented their solid waste plan for the state. I think it was very smart that they included haulers, they included some residents, they included some HOA people. I think it'd be very wise if we can have that, county officials, independent haulers, and then some HOA officials, and let's meet, let's meet once a quarter, once a month, or whatever, let's devise a plan. But I think, as John said, Cobb County is, is a great place to live. I think we need to be leaders, we need to be leaders, and not follow somebody else's failed plan that's, that's really not that good. No disrespect to, to Dr. Jenkins. He's trying to do his job and solve a problem that the commissioners tasked him with. He also had another plan in 2019 that wasn't entirely bad. I mean, it, it had some great, I think, some great plausibility, and maybe we could do a combination of that as well. But I think, like John said, we, we are all here to do one job, and it's to satisfy our customer. I have a lot of ideas as association, as I try to help with this association, where a lot of smaller companies are having struggles. We can help them with that. They might see a hurdle, that looks like a big hurdle, but I might have already gotten past the hurdle, and I can explain to them how easy it is to, to resolve and how to move past it. But I think we can work together as a, as a group and continue to give Cobb County citizens, you know, a choice. I've met several of our customers here, and I, I didn't know they were going to be here, but who else here that's a customer of Custom Disposal Service? Isn't this funny? Isn't this ironic? John, who's owner of Trash Taxi, picked up his garbage at his house, because, because he hasn't, his company hasn't started, started services his street yet. But anyway, thank you, thank you all of you for supporting us. We've been in business for 37 years in Cobb County, and we, and we now service around 18,000 residents in Cobb County, and, and we're just proud to be here. This, the proposed measure would hurt us, would devastate us, and it would take some people out of business completely, 100%. So, we're, we're very passionate about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
So, I, I don't know. I did want to follow up on some points that John, Brian, and Parks that you shared, to see how plausible of a solution this could be, knowing that this doesn't have to be ironed out overnight. But what I thought I heard is an offer that if we get a complaint, that if we have contact, that we can devise some type of timeframe to hear back from the hauler with respect to that matter. I could tell you that would go a very long way for us, because the residents are pressing on us when they're not getting a response. Is that what I'm hearing?
Exactly. You're, you're our elected officials. We voted for you to, to help, you know, manage the business. We don't, we, we don't want you to, to stand alone as our representatives. This is an area we believe that we, we need to support our community with. So, I think, I think, again, as we think about how that might work, there's some details, but again, the big companies, you guys deal with this stuff all day. I mean, we all do. We all have a complaint log, we all manage complaints. And again, just for perspective, if I'm servicing 200,000 homes a, a month, and I used to work with one of the big haulers, as a matter of fact, and we serviced 100,000 homes a week, you know, if we had 50 complaints, I mean, when you think about 100,000 touch points, maybe getting 50, and it could be my bill, or it could be, you know, the guy left a gum wrapper in my trash can, or they spilled, they didn't put the can back. I mean, but, but that's all stuff that we live and, and deal with every day. So, that's just part of our business. You know, we, we want to be, not necessarily complaint-free, but do a high-quality job, where we're servicing, you know, 98, 90%, 99% of the time, we're doing a great job. We're not getting, we're not getting the call. But I think if, you know, if those calls come in, we have to figure out a way to validate them. County may be able to help with that. Enforcement might be able to help with that. Then if it gets to the right haulers, and the network is small, then you should, you should be able to expect a response back from us as just part of, part of working on the problem. And I've, if I could, just another, I'm not going to distribute this map, hold on. But like, here's an example of, of what Trash Taxi services in Cobb County. If it was close up, you could see exactly where we are. Now, if I've got to move a truck to Smyrna, well, I'm not down there, right? And these trucks are five bucks a mile to move. That's why we're careful on where we go, right, and, and what we do. But, but if you, if you looked at the other haulers in here, and again, the representation from the small haulers, if, here's all the small haulers, then, oh, you know what? We've got reliable sanitation down there, or we've got Smith sanitation down there in that service area. Here's, here's your options that you may not be familiar with. And, and then if we've got a, a zone or a patch where there are no other options, or there's just one option, and we'd like to have another option, you know, then I think the, the small haulers, or any of the big haulers, could look at expanding into that area. But expansion's expensive. It's not that we don't ever do it, but if, if we know we've got an area that's underserved by the county, by, by the, by the haulers in the county, what we're saying is, we would absolutely take a look at that. And if we moved into an area, again, some of our friendly competitors are here, if we moved into an area, we're going to move. I'm not, I can't go there for one customer, but we'll, you know, we'll promote ourselves so that we can get our route, you know, so that we can make it worthwhile to send that truck there. But that's, that's one of the ways we thought we could help, we could help the community.
Thank you. I'm going to go a little bit off agenda if there's another remark. I should have kept my glasses on. Dr. McMorris, did you want to share anything from your office's perspective with our haulers, before I go back to them?
I really appreciate your listening, Angela. And I thank you all for being here today. The only thing I want to say is that there is no problem that we together cannot solve. So, I'm grateful and thankful today that, that seems to be the sentiment of those around the table. The draft ordinance has certainly provided us an opportunity for us to work collaboratively, and I think that's what we all want. I stand ready to, to not only help with the staff in drafting something that we think is mutually beneficial, I also stand here to, to work with you in partnership with you as haulers in Cobb County. So, with that, I'm, I sit back, and I'm still listening and learning, and I think we have a challenge on the table, Chairwoman, which is for the haulers to sit down with the staff to figure out how we solve this together. And so, I would suggest that before we leave today, let's put pen to paper to see when and who is willing to really put their money where their mouth is, sit down with us and come up with something. And I do appreciate the fact that you're saying that it does take time to work this out, and I think that we can do that. So, if you're willing to, to work with us, I would like to have your name and number, or check your name off the contact list so that we and staff can sit down with you in the coming days and figure out how we work together on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McMorris. Yes?
First of all, I apologize if I can't articulate things quite as well as my wife. However, on a, on a recycle note, first of all, if you don't realize and probably don't really care, but you guys do, is that there's not really a lot of profit within recycling. It's really kind of a convenience for the homeowners. There's not profit in it for these guys. Unfortunately, I don't care, I'm a homeowner, just take my recycling. I have had recycling from a company in, in this room that did not pick up our recycling for almost two months, over two months, because they kept saying, "We don't have drivers, we don't have drivers." So, we no longer have service with that company. Now, as I said, I'm a junk removal and demolition company. I do not come to your house to pick up your garbage. I work with companies, investors, general contractors, real estate agents, rehab companies, and I stay busy five to six days a week with three trucks, trailers, running full-time with nine guys that can work, again, on Saturdays if I need them to, including myself. I was working today. I had to change clothes before I came here. And Joseph knows, I've seen him plenty of times at, at dumps in the morning, at 5:00 in the mornings, and sometimes at 5:00 in the afternoons. We don't operate, small companies like us don't operate on the world's largest net. My trucks take about $125 to $150 a day in diesel, and I got three of them running. I overpay my guys, I pay them very well. I make sure they have a roof over their head and a paycheck every Friday, and I buy them lunch two, three days a week. Do I have to do that? No, but I do it. So, I operate at a very low net, and Joseph may very well do the same thing with his guys. But what is being proposed here, this 18%? And from what I understand, everybody here has no desire to implement this, but obviously someone does. As a homeowner, I'm going to tell you, stay out of my pocket. As a business owner, stay out of my pocket, because what you're wanting to do is, you're going to keep me from using the Cobb County transfer station that is on government, or County Services Parkway, that I'm at some mornings at 5:45 to 5:50 in the morning, to be the first or second in line, so I can hurry up and get my, what I have in my trailer dumped, so I can pick up my guys by 7:30, so we can get to the job site 8:00, 8:30, so we can get our day done. And sometime, we run, each trailer runs about three to four times a day at wherever we're at, at the dump that's nearby. So, with dump fees being anywhere from $75 per ton to some places just outside of this county, $125 a ton, it's insane. And now you're wanting to raise it more, and then, oh, by the way, I'm going to raise your taxes for your homeowner, and I'm going to raise your dump fees, actually, I'm just going to kick you out of the county where you can't come. There's already two or three transfer stations that only the larger taxi or trash companies can use that I can't go to anyways. Don't take this from me. Don't implement 18% on my taxes as a homeowner. Don't kill my business. Don't make me have to have these guys go find another job if they can, that have had a roof over their head for three years now, thanks to, thanks to me. And I took them off the streets, one was sleeping underneath a freaking overpass. Don't do this. Take your 18%, figure it out some other way. But don't destroy the little guy. Don't take Joseph and I out of business, or happen to go somewhere else an hour and a half away in, in the morning. I already leave my house early enough as it is.
Thank you. Dr. Jenkins? There's, there's a, something I wanted you to address is this 18%. I know when I was looking at my code package, I did not see that. Can you address that figure, where it's coming from, and why that has possibly been perpetuated?
Actually, Chairwoman, I have no idea where the 18% came from. That was nothing that was written into, you know, our ordinance amendment. It was generated somewhere, I guess, outside of, I guess, the county. So, there was no percentage given in our ordinance, you know, amendment draft.
That doesn't make it true. If it didn't start with us, then it, I'm asking you, how can we find out? That's why I'm asking the question. So, you know.
Hi. Steve Rogers from West Cobb.
Yes, Steve.
I think that was maybe what another metro county had done, and the assumption was made, "When that did, Cobb will do it," and people ran with it.
Okay.
So, I want to touch back to something John and Jonathan, Dr. Jenkins, were talking about with, as far as the service area. When we fill out our packet to get our permit every year, it asks for, "Where do you service?" And, you know, we can't get down to, you know, West Roswell Road and that kind of stuff, but maybe we could get down to zip codes. And then when you have someone call in, and they say, "Well, I live in 3008," then you filter your list by 3008 and go, "Hey, here's your five people that we know work in that area," and that might help just a little bit. That, that data, we give that data to Sandra every year. It's in the packet, what's done, that, you know, I, I don't know, but, but we do provide, we're asked to provide it.
I think that is a great idea. I can share with you that I've received multiple complaints from persons, I guess, Jonathan, your officer, Keep Cobb Beautiful, might provide a list of the haulers to the resident, and they've shared, "We've called five or six persons, and no one is still willing to come out and get our waste." Maybe narrowing it by zip code can help, because there certainly is a lot more on that list. But I can tell you something that I would desire, and I need some help to see how we can move forward with this. But for those that are having those challenges, whether or not they are saying they can't get a hauler, or their hauler has somehow missed service, I'm trying to see if there's some way we can have someone on retainer, or someone on call that we can reach out to, and we can bill whoever missed that hauler for that work, or we can somehow fill in that gap. And I think the zip code is going to help us fill in the gap of the issues of people just missing weeks sometimes on end. You know, are there any thoughts of what we could potentially do?
Might have a gold mine in this area that nobody else has searched.
Let me ask you this, are any of you, and maybe it's not the most comfortable to put anybody on the spot, but we've had issues with some of our residents who live on cul-de-sacs. Are there some types of equipment that are easier to get on cul-de-sacs than others?
Well, I don't think it's cul-de-sacs so much as streets that don't have cul-de-sacs.
Streets, oh, okay. I see, like a dead-end street.
So, if you're backing off a S.A.M.B. plane, but if there was a dead-end street that had a cul-de-sac, you can't get a truck down that road.
Okay. Are there any of you providing service down those types of roadways? I see you nodding your head.
Sometimes, and I believe we speak for most of us, we have to back up close to half mile or quarter mile. It's not safe. And we do operate smaller equipment in such areas, but it is a challenge. We try to tend to folks who live in dead-end streets, but often, especially if automated equipment is used, not having the ability to turn around also makes it very challenging to service both, both sides of the street at the same time.
Definitely agree. And a few years ago, we actually had, I think, one of the streets that garbage haulers stopped servicing was when the garbage hauler was backing down the street, and a lady's doll broke off of the leash because of the beep, beep, and ran out and got ran over by the truck. And then, of course, you know, nobody wanted to really service that street anymore.
Okay, understood.
And, Chairwoman, it also occurs to me that if you're having to back a truck up that far, it probably does not meet fire code. So, actually, there may be a solution that maybe these streets, the county can come in and actually create the proper turnaround that would meet the fire code, because if they're having to back up that far, that probably doesn't meet current, current fire code.
Yeah, so we try to address that in zoning of new roadways.
These are old, I'm sure.
It challenges us, yes, with older communities, and there would be another set of issues, because you'd have to take property to do it, but I don't know if there's a solution, but I can tell you, we've received calls and emails from persons with that circumstance.
I didn't, I was going to provide opportunity for commissioners to speak after the roundtable, but I think I'll segue now, if you guys have any comments or questions or feedback. And I'll start with you, Commissioner Gammbrill.
Well, Jackie, my first thought is we've, Jackie, my first thought is, we started that website, that listed the nonprofits that people could go and put in their address, and then find out what services were, were provided. Why not add trash haulers to that? So, that way, if you entered the zip code, they could find that themselves.
We can do that.
Yeah, so that would be something, a resource that the county currently has.
Yes.
Thank you all for your suggestions. I think they're all very workable and doable. I do believe we need to rely more on you to solve the issues that our constituents are stating, but I have still an issue with how we're, we're phrasing this 150 or 600 number of complaints, because are they inquiries, or are they complaints? You know, I have inquiries as far as where I can, you know, recycle newspaper. That's an inquiry, that's not a complaint against you. So, I think the county needs to do a better job of, you know, defining what is a complaint and what is an inquiry from there. But I look forward to working with you to find some resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
Thanks. Thanks, all of you, for coming today, and we have had some great suggestions, and already even some solutions, I think, that will help. But of the 1,241 emails I have received, two were in favor of the one hauler per one district. And you heard the Chairwoman say that at our work session, none of the commissioners were in favor of that. So, it, it has created a firestorm, but it's good that it's out there, and now, you know, we can work together to resolve some issues. Do any of the haulers, small or big, still have... Do any of the haulers, small or big, still have what we, what was, used to be scout trucks or pup trucks that could go into these small areas, these dead-end areas that could turn in a driveway instead of a, or turn around on the end of a street? Are, are you a hauler? Okay, you're supposed to...
Come to the table, sir. Join us.
Tell us your name and who you're with.
Pull up a seat.
My name's Taylor.
Might have a solution.
Oh, all righty. I own Up, Up and Away Junk Calling, and we actually service some smaller accounts. One of elderly families that do not have the capability to move their heavy trashcans down the large, steep driveways. These are the kind of services we can offer because we run a truck and trailer model. We spend a lot of time training our guys on how to properly drive, as all of us do, or should, but I mean, do, obviously. And being able to have that certain kind of equipment, we are able to maneuver it in all sorts of tight and complicated spots. For example, we get our equipment on floor five of parking decks for contractors, right? But that is a, I think, is a fantastic solution to those kind of things, is bring in some of the smaller haulers that might not be a conventional compactor truck running everything, but saying, hey, you know what, let's solve this with a little bit of, instead of diesel, let's solve it with gasoline and sweat. And I think, I think that might be an option to employ, incorporating a list of people who might not be your conventional haulers but fall in the more junk calling category. Say, you know what, we're happy to go walk ourselves up that 35% grade and carry your trashcan down with us. We definitely employ those and they go really well for us.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate that. Good job. Want to add something?
Also, you know, this is, the roundtable, this discussion has been great today to hear from all of you and, and our staff. But this should have happened a long time ago. And we have been working on this. When Rob Hosack was here as county manager, he and I met with several of you to look at solutions. And that got, I guess, on a shelf and not revisited or put out to pasture. So, and, and we know that we do need to, to work together to service our customers, our residents and constituents. So this does need a lot of work, but I think coming together today is a good sign. And then also hearing from the public at future town halls, once we have something drafted that we're, you know, looking at implementing will help. But I, I don't think, this is the time right now, because I know that a lot of people, not just haulers, are struggling with getting workers with fuel costs and inflation and everything going on. This is not the time to implement any ordinance mandatory or, or otherwise. So I think this has been a great way to segue into more discussion and working together with all of you. And just appreciate you being here, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Commissioner.
I have a follow-up question because I don't think this is something we're also considering with the way the environment is right now. What is preventing you from expanding your services beyond, beyond employing and finding workforce? What other issues are you finding with providing service?
Okay, again, we, again, we would just ask to hear from the haulers and as Commissioner Burl shared, we will have time coming up very soon for the public. Craig, if you can help us. Craig, this is the second time we've asked. Okay, if you know, please act like you know.
All right, so we get inquiries daily. I have to turn away two out of three, pretty much. As John said, it's cost $5 a mile to move a truck. So when we get, when somebody calls our office and says, can you pick me up on whatever the street is, our office is not allowed to just say yes. So any new street that we don't already service, they, it comes to me. I, I open Google Earth, I drop a pin on their address and I'll see, I can look at a map, a heat map of all of our trucks because we track everything with GPS and I can see how close they come. And then I can measure, Google Earth has a measuring tool. So if it's, basically, if it's a mile and, a half a mile out of the way, you know, you have to drive a half a mile there, half a mile back, it just becomes non-profitable. And if, if we have a, we try to, you know, have a service time of 30 seconds or less per stop. That's our, that's our goal and that's normally what we're running. So, so the reason for non-expansion is purely economical and, and just logistics. But if we can organize as, as a group of, and get everybody's information that services Cobb and, and, and get educated where we all can service and who's looking to expand in certain areas, or there's new companies that, that are brand new, fast trash sanitation. I'd like to learn from them where they're servicing. They might, you know, when there's a bad performer in the area, and, and somebody mentioned, Steve mentioned this a few weeks ago, you know, there's, there's a saying of, about low hanging fruit on a tree, like if you're wanting to expand in another company's area, you know, and, and market that, sometimes there is low hanging fruit, but sometimes the fruit's right on the ground. All you have to do is say, okay, I'm going over here and you can get all the business you want. But, but if we, if we communicate and we have a really good dialogue and we have information that we share, yeah, it could be detrimental to some people, but, but for the purpose of, of solving the problems, we, we can do it. We're, we're smart enough. It's, we're just talking about garbage, you know?
Thank you. I think we can too.
What about like getting containers, getting new trucks, getting other equipment?
Oh, of course. Trucks right now, we, we're trying to order trucks. Mac, for instance, they won't take an order, I mean, they won't even take an order from us. And even in 2023, they're saying, you can't even order one next year. John has trucks on order, they're gonna take several months. So, so now we're, we're looking at buying a used truck and then buying a body from somewhere else and have it mounted and, or, or buy, you know, rentals. I mean, you can't even, last year, you couldn't even rent a truck. I mean, you couldn't even rent one. So when, so, and we had a truck that was brand new and it was the sending unit and the fuel tank, and it was on national back order. That truck sat for like eight weeks, brand new truck, because of the supply chain problem. So a lot of the challenges the big companies have, I, my heart goes out to them because I only have these issues with X amount of employees and X amount of customers. I couldn't imagine it, you know, times 10 or times 100. And, and with the four-zone issue, I mean, it would be colossal. The number two thing you have on here, residents who have only one choice, that's one of your biggest complaints. So we don't want to just give them one choice, do we, to answer the complaint question? But anyway, I don't want to harp on that. But I, I think a committee or a group of people, volunteers, and have them, you know, in every area that's a good makeup of the county, the HOAs, the companies, independents and large haulers, waste management's here, GFL's here, Americans here. If we're all communicating together, meeting on a regular basis, I don't know if it's quarterly or, or month, once a month, we can, we can draft something that'll work for everybody.
That would be great. That would. And this gets me to another point, Parks, I know you have a question, is, so there's been discussion about us tabling this and waiting to get feedback or, I don't know if there was an idea to table this all together. We have our county attorney, Debbie Boyer, with us and she can talk to us about that process. There's a reason why I shared during our work session that I wasn't a fan of us tabling this, because I felt it would lose momentum for us to address the issue. And we've had other code amendment packages where we've tabled something and then it comes back six months, a year later in the same condition that it was in. And we've been trying to address this for three or four years. So I think the opportunity for us to put this on the table at least helped to facilitate this conversation. But other than a practical bar, there is a legal bar to us just pulling this right away. That doesn't mean that we are going to approve what's on the table, but I do like the idea of us coming together to craft something. But Debbie, I just want to make sure we check in with you so you can let us know what are our legal parameters that we have to consider.
Yes, Debbie.
I'm sorry, Bill, excuse me. Bill, did you prefer, you know, Bill, I didn't see you behind the commissioner. No, excuse me, excuse me. Proper protocol, our county attorney. Let's, are you sure?
You're, you're speaking, Chairwoman Cupid, as to the code amendment process?
Yes, but I under, I understand because it's been advertised, there's some limitations.
Right. Because, because it has been advertised, it will go through the first public hearing, which is on September 13th. So it will be, it's out there, it's advertised. We can make changes to it between the first public hearing, which is September 13th, and then the second public hearing on the 27th. So it can be changed in that time period. At the board's vote, it can be, of course, tabled entirely after the, the first public hearing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bill, did you have anything else to add to that?
Debbie, you did a great job.
Thanks.
It is, because it has been advertised, we do have to have the first public hearing to hear public comment. But again, as I said, at that public hearing, there can be a vote by the board to, to pool it for the second public hearing.
And that doesn't mean that the citizens will still show up and they could still speak on the 27th and still provide public comment at that point in time too, during the public hearing as well.
Correct.
Even if it's tabled, they can still speak to it, sure. I don't think we would prevent anybody from doing that, so.
But can we announce at the beginning of the meeting that we are still gonna have the public hearings because it was advertised, that it will be tabled by vote after the first hearing?
Yeah, yes. I mean, you could say that, that the vote will be presented to the board, but until the vote's taken, it's not tabled, so.
Thank you.
And it's been positive and constructive, but I do have to kind of push it back to the county a little bit too, is when we come back, back together as a committee, we've talked about what the haulers are willing to do. We also have to ask what the county is willing to do. And there are things that, such as making sure the transfer station, if there's any issues there on the operation there that can be improved, that county can do to help these folks provide their service to their customers. So that, that's number one. Number two, the recycling stations, because quite frankly, I'll use my personal experience, you know, when my recycling is not picked up, it's not a big deal to me because I now know where the recycling station is, so I just put my car and drive there. So I don't get really irritated at my provider because I understand they've got challenges and so it's not a big deal to me. So again, the, these recycling stations that the county operates, how can those be more effectively used to provide service to the customer and also relieve some of the issues that, that the haulers have? And, and we even talked about too, like one of the big, biggest times I think y'all probably get biggest complaints is the holidays. And, you know, is the, especially on Christmas, they're, everybody's trying to get, you know, take off for their families, just like the hauler, employees want the same thing, but everybody's got Amazon boxes stacked up. And they want to get rid of those Amazon boxes. Well, would that be a great opportunity? Home Depot does the Christmas tree recycling, a big, good opportunity to have some roll-offs at some of the county parks where people can quickly and conveniently get away from their house and their family for a few minutes and take, take their, their recycling rather than have it stacked up out front waiting for the, the hauler that has got a challenge on, on timing. So those are options. I, I was just making sure that, that the county also comes to the table with different things that, that they can offer to help the situation too.
Of course. I do want to have Kimberly address the recycling matter with the drop-off locations.
Yes, so, you know, obviously, recycling is really big during the holiday season, that's true. I spent my last holiday picking up recycling all over the ground with Dr. Gibson here and a few others. But, you know... Or focused on Earth Day or Earth Month. So it, you know, it kind of comes and goes throughout the year. And, you know, we, we did provide recycling drop-off options, but it wasn't, it wasn't serviced by the county, it was serviced by a third-party vendor. That third-party vendor had a hard time keeping up with the volume. And so, and so being able to get, you know, either drivers to be able to service it or having enough trucks, so there was just a number of, of things happening there. But we are looking at, you know, creating, you know, drop-spot locations or areas where people can drop off their material and it would be... County, there were four drop-off locations at one, or actually five, actually, at one, at one locate, at one time. There was one for each commissioner district and then there was one in the center of the county. And even with, you know, and then there are other drop-offs in cities as well, in some cities in the county. And so even with all of those drop-offs, we still have people call our office and say, I don't have a drop-off close enough to where, you know, I, I live. So, you know, we have to look at, you know, the county as a whole and like where people can drop off material. But we are working on that solution and, you know, I definitely encourage, you know, if you have some suggestions or you have things that you think, you know, will, will benefit the residents, please feel free to, you know, reach out to our office to let me know because I'm more than happy to listen. And John, thank you so much as well as a number of the haulers here that jumped on board and helped with, you know, special recycling programs that we have to help clean up our recycling options that we have in the county, like the Hefty Energy Bag Program. There are a number of haulers here that jumped on board with, with that. And I really appreciate that because it helps us keep our recycling clean. So thank you. And, and John, I thought I heard you also mention that, that you're more than willing to kind of help out with the recycling drop-spot, so I think I'm gonna call you personally.
I got some great ideas around this, but I will tell you, again, COVID changed the way people shop and, and our recycling at the curb has exploded because of people working from home and, of course, when kids were not at school and businesses, I mean, it just went through the roof. And we're still, of course, now we all like it, right? Everybody likes Amazon and Target and all, we like getting these packages. So we have, Dave just whispered in my ear, 30% more recycling volume. But again, if, if you pay me, I can do the work, but there's, there's that, that cost. But, you know, again, I think the people, and again, waste management, GFL, American, these guys too are a wealth of resources because they, they provide solutions around our country for, for these types of challenges.
I, I just wanted to say, in the meantime, until we get this all worked out, we do have a dedicated email for trash complaints, if you're missed or any questions, trashcomplaints@cobcounty.org. So you can still use that as a dedicated email. It goes to Jonathan and Kimberly, but they will direct it to whatever hauler it's, it's referencing. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about that.
Okay. Is there any other comments or suggestions?
I, being a simple trash man like I am, I like to generalize and put things into categories that make sense. And to me, it makes sense that the men and women sitting around this table are incredibly good at solving the day-in, day-out problems that our wonderful county faces when it comes to getting rid of unwanted items. I think that is the biggest benefit of the private sector is we are good at getting things done. Now, to give the county their due, I think the county is fantastic at keeping up with information and records and list building and convening meetings where people who care about their county can show up. I think if we can intersect those two in a beautiful little Venn diagram, I think we will be good to go. That's why I'm very excited about the prospect of continuing these meetings, continuing the conversations for those of us who love our county and for many like me who grew up here, I was born in Kinnostone Hospital, that could see this beautiful county continue to grow, continue to get more clean. And I can have confidence in sending my clients to the Keep Cobb Beautiful events, which I do every time they happen. And y'all can have confidence in saying, here are some great haulers that we're in communication with that'll help you solve this problem. Let me pass that information along to you.
Wonderful.
I think if we can get, get the ball rolling on that, maybe that's the solution.
Agreed.
If they're, if they're a hauler here today and they're not on this list, what do they need to do?
Need to contact my office and Sandra will get them a permit application kit and they can be added, you know, as a county hauler. Now, if you have your business licenses in Cobb County, you also will have to go through business license. Matter of fact, you really can't get your business license without the hauler permit if you register there as a hauler. And real quick, just a couple of points of clarification, Parks, I believe you mentioned about the transfer station. Now, were you saying that communication relative to the county's transfer station or were you talking about all... you talking about all transfer stations in the county?
I was starting with the county's transfer station, the hours of operation. I heard some issues about, you know, could the hours be expanded? I'm just saying, posing it as a question that came up from some of the haulers that they had concerns about how the transfer station operates, and it's worth the discussion to have.
The county's transfer station is operated by GFL, so I can communicate with Eric or, I think that's, you know, under your purview, and see about hours of operation for the county's transfer station. And GFL, of course, operates two transfer stations in the county. Waste Management, of course, operates the largest transfer station in the county at Plant Acton, so we have other operators in the room, so that's why I was asking.
Well, and to the private operators, I mean, obviously, they operate it under contract with the county, the county facility. For the private operators, is there a way that the county can help encourage them to accept other haulers? So that's a question. Another question to come up at the roundtable, smaller roundtable committee discussion.
A lot of the transfer stations, like Marble Mill, sorry, a lot of the transfer stations, like Marble Mill, they only want you to go in with a compactor. You have to wear a hard hat, you gotta go in with a compactor. They're moving volume. When my truck goes in there, it's picked up 300 homes of garbage, and we're in and out in no time. That's one of the challenges we have over here at the GFL facility off County Services Parkway, is we're in line with every homeowner that wants to go, every junk hauler, no offense, that wants to go, and that turns out to be a problem. And Commissioner Burrow, what you mentioned about a scout truck, does the code allow for scout trucks, or does it have to be a compactor?
The code allows for scout trucks. Some H.O.A.s in there, so they don't want these garbage trucks.
Exactly. Every one of us in here, are you okay with a scout truck backing up to a compactor and transferring garbage from that scout truck to the compactor in front of your house? Nobody is, yeah. And then what would happen is, you know, people that ran those.
Who was it?
Trash busters. Used to run a ton of those things and did a great job, but they would go to like pools in the neighborhood, and they, you know, somebody didn't like that. So a lot of hypothetical ideas are not practical and influential, so, yeah.
And also for you, Brian, when you mentioned working with the city of Milton, now was that consultant-driven, or how did that work?
Yeah, so there was a consultant that they had hired. They were out of Savannah, and then, I don't know what role they played in it, but they, I guess with their experience with setting up plans to present to the state, they kind of helped, you know, the framework of setting up that plan. So yes, there was a consultant involved. I don't know who they are, we can research and see who hauls out there, what they charge, what benefit would they be. And then you also wanted me to mention about the cost of new garbage trucks. John, you care to share? Yeah, because I've got seven of them on order now, which by the way, it's been a 10-month order, and then the price just went up, you know, 5% because of steel price. But my next, my next round of the robo, I call them the robo truck, right? It's got the arm that picks up the trash, $408,000 per truck, and that's, and then I got sales tax on top of that. So, you know, to buy this equipment, I mean, to finance this stuff for us, I don't have the checkbook my friend Eric has, right? We have to finance this, but, you know, you're looking at a $7,000 a month payment. I have to pick up a lot of trash to pay for these trucks, a lot of efficiency. I ordered some new Mack rear loaders, not the robo, but just the rear loaders. The last one I ordered, $350,000. The price was up $50,000 from prior year. And that's if you can, today, if you can get them. I had a salesman call me a few months ago, John, we had a customer cancel an order, I got this truck, do you want it? Yes. My response to him, my next call was to the bank, hey, can you guys loan me money on this truck? Because I don't know, I don't know when I'm gonna get one or when we're gonna need one, but the, but the supply chain issues, as Brian mentioned, are real, and I'm sure if we heard from any of the majors, we've all had equipment down, we're paying huge payments on it, and it's sitting there, we're waiting on a $20 part, a $50 part. The garages are struggling with diesel technicians, you know, technicians are hard to find. So it's not, it's not any one thing that affects us, but it's what we do every day, and that's why we're in the business. We, I wouldn't say we enjoy all the challenges, but, you know, we tackle them so that we can go out there and service our community and pick up our customers, because that's what we do. Our customers are the ones that hire us every day to do the job. But, no, trucks are horrific and cost of service, diesel fuel, my costs have doubled just in the last, in the last eight months. So when you look at, and again, for people that don't know, our top cost as a hauler, number one, it's labor, right? Most businesses, it's labor. And now you've got the pressure on commercial drivers and wage increases. Even the county just raised wages for their commercial drivers to 25 bucks an hour. And I, I mean, even almost that, you can't hardly find a commercial driver. So that affects the cost of service. Fuel is one of our top costs. I mean, these trucks slurp up, you know, several hundred dollars' worth of fuel a day. You got a one-inch nozzle to fill that tank. And then the third thing is disposal, you know, a lot of regulations, a lot of energy involved around managing disposal. So those are top three costs. Fuel, disposal, and labor have all, I mean, that's 70% of our cost, and we have just seen that skyrocket. So as we pass that along to our customer, and we have to stay in business, right? We need public sanitation. You know, no one likes it, but it's, that's a fact, that's a fact of what we do. It's not like my friend who is a CPA, you know, his computer doesn't cost anymore to operate, right? So that's, that's the analogy, but yeah, the cost of trucks. But I got just a couple more comments, if I may, and I know we're getting close on time, but some of the other things that you mentioned, the seniors on, the fixed incomes, that's a big group, you know? We all have parents or, you know, we know somebody, that's a senior citizen. And we pick up seniors that have estates, they have kids and grandkids over, they generate volumes of garbage. Do I, can I afford to give them? No, but one of the things we can do is give them one container, and it's a small container, and anything outside of the container, you know, you're restricted. So the haulers have got some flexibility to respond to the seniors. Some seniors, that's all they need, that's great, we can save you a little bit of money. Others, you know, they like to have big parties and, you know, fancy lawns, and they need more. So again, just as those complaints come in, just buffer that with, hey, I think there's haulers out there that have solutions. We all deal with people that have had job losses or catastrophic events to their family or their elderly, and when you're servicing a customer for 37 years, you know. I mean, Steve and Brian, you know, we know if someone's in a rough patch, yeah, we're gonna give them a break, because we've all been there. So we've got ways to work with the seniors. I think the, and Jonathan mentioned it earlier, and Kimberly, you've got these recycling, we would love to see these. I mean, send these out to us so we can validate them. And if you have these complaints, service issues, I think you're well within the rights of the county management. Again, we've, you're elected officials or hired, but if there's, if there's problems and you send something to this man, Eric, right, he's the guy that can solve the problem right here, he's the guy. Or this is the guy right here at Trash Taxi. But it's fine to say, hey, if I don't hear back from you in a couple of days, I'm gonna loop back with you in a month or in three weeks. Let's go over how you're handling your business.
Sir.
Just real quick, as part, that was one of my last points of clarification based off of what Brian said concerning, I guess revitalizing, I guess, the Independent Haulers Association. Now by that, are you saying in the future, it might just be one point of contact, say, for the Independent Haulers Association, that I could send the complaints or the request for service to, that independent haulers?
I think that's entirely possible as we get together and organize. I mean, anything's possible. I know that would be much easier, you know? Of course, I don't have time to take the call, of course, but we could, as an association, we can figure it out. I know that'd be much simpler. And you asked me in a conversation a week or so ago about a website. Yeah, we can launch a website. However, do we want to, we just have to work it out. Do we need another website that could answer all the questions that could be on the solid waste tab of the Cobb County website, you know? So that's, those are all the discussions that we should have and just work out all the problems. But I think we need, we need a mechanism for the county as they, as you have to deal with the customers, you need to have a response for them and to say, you know, part of our procedure is, we send the complaint to the hauler and we expect a response back in a timely manner, you know, whatever that is. And if they continue to have issues, whatever they are, you know, you authorize us to operate in the county. So it's kind of like if I'm a kid and I'm in trouble, I get, I gotta clean it up, right? My parents are gonna warn me or ground me, and if I don't clean it up, well, then I'm, then I'm grounded. So there has to be some way that, within the existing structure, to help manage that. So you're not powerless, so you can respond to your constituents, and you are, you're the county, we respect that. We operate here, but I think, I think some mechanism of that that we can, that we can live with that's reasonable, would be reasonable to have that mechanism in place.
To tag on to that point, I don't think it's fair for the county to get involved if the customer hasn't contacted you directly. So, you know, that puts you at an unfair disadvantage if they're calling us to register a complaint against a service provider, because unless they go to you first, you have no opportunity to fix the correction. So I would like to see before a complaint comes to the county, it's documented that they actually reached out to you.
That's perfect. We would love that, absolutely.
We can broker that connection. I mean, this is not just unique to this industry. Residents have issues with a lot of things, they might contact us, but we hope that we have a good enough relationship that we can reach out to whoever that service provider is and have a contact. And normally, we get them after they've got no results of response from their haulers.
Most of the time, they're called directly, and when they don't feel it's being resolved or anything's being done, they're bringing it to the next level.
There are a number of people around the table we have not heard from, and we have about 18 minutes left, and so I want to make sure that we gave everyone an opportunity to provide some feedback if they desire.
And to tag along to that, I know we have a few of our major haulers, large haulers that collect over 100,000 homes, and haven't really heard anything from them, so. Is it still mayor? No, no longer mayor.
No, I just want to say, the county commissioners are trying to make things better for Cobb County, and we support that. Yeah, we're a big hauler, but regardless, we're a hauler, we're with you, we're in the same business together, and I think this is a good start of a positive step moving forward. So that's all I got. GFL want to talk?
Echo those sentiments, you know, we are, you know, larger companies, but we're still small haulers out on the streets as well. Same issues that a lot of smaller haulers experience, we experience as well, rising costs, inflation, same challenges. You know, we're out here in the streets with you all, you know, working side by side to get it done and serve the county. So really like this collaborative effort, and I think it's going in the right direction. And all of us together, of course, we can work together to help solve the issues.
John? Yeah, we are, we are.
No, and I, you know, I'm not the great operator Mr. Soring is or others around the table, but yeah, we're all in the same boat here. We have the same sentiments to this, what everybody has spoken, so that's why I kind of sit back and watch everybody have some fun.
I'm James with Fast Trash Sanitation. We are a new company, 10 months into this trash business, we're excited about it. We're in Cobb, Douglas, and Paulding County, we're growing. We definitely gonna be at a lot of these meetings, this is our first meeting. We learn, definitely learning a lot, but we are definitely, definitely, you know, whatever need to be done, we definitely gonna get on board and be at a lot of these meetings.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna go ahead and say it while we're over here. I'm the oldest person at this table, probably, and I've been picking up trash probably more than all of you at your age as well. I understand the problems, both with the haulers, because we've been a small hauler, a medium hauler, and I've worked for a large hauler. I understand the large haulers, because I was had the opportunity to work for them. There is a solution to this that would make everybody happy, I think, but the most important thing are the residents of the county. We've got to make sure that we answer the questions that the county has asked us as haulers, and at the same time, as a small hauler, provide that level of service. John, you said something that means more than anything here today is density. There's, if you don't have density, you cannot drive realistically, and I think that's what the county's trying to get at. You can't drive to get one person five miles away, and you're not gonna do it, and if there's nobody over there that's willing to do it, then what does that person do? That's gotta be solved. Some of the other issues were poor service. Well, I think if, the poor service issue is, there's a lot, I think COVID right now has been the scapegoat for a lot of things, but I think that with enough good haulers, you'll always have that option to find another person. I'll tell you, another issue that was brought up is the number of trucks in a neighborhood on a weekly basis. You'll have garbage cans out every day of the week. That's a problem. There's a way to solve that, I think. You have to, you have to work at it, but there is a problem. Pricing, it works itself out one way or the other, based on competition. Illegal dumping, that's an issue. I understand the junk haulers are here, and I get it, but most people don't want to pay for an eighth of a truck or a half a truck, they just have a mattress or a sofa. So they load it up, they go down the end of that street, they just dump it off, and they're done with it. That's a problem. The transfer station for Cobb County, you've got a lot of people that don't have anything to do on Saturday morning but load up their trash and go sit in line and talk to the other folks sitting in line. So, I mean, that's, that is, that's just part of it. So, and so I have been doing this, backdoor service, I've been doing this for over 50 years. I was just a baby when I started. But it's been 50 years, and I think the county's on the right road to getting something done. I certainly understand the small haulers and the hauler's situation, but there really is a, there is a middle ground, we just got to get together. I think Brian's right, we got with Milton, I've worked with other cities, municipalities and counties. We just need to get together, come up with a solution. Not everybody's gonna be happy, but everybody's gonna walk away and say, well, that wasn't too bad. I mean, you know, everybody's doing pretty good. But the most important thing is that the residents, making sure they get what they want to get. I'm here to help you. But you need to hurry up, because I haven't got a whole lot longer.
Well, on our official time, and we have 12 minutes left, and just thought, again, that we would use this time to address a path forward, and certainly, I've heard today that we need to come together to figure out a solution together. But all of that, again, is within this legal framework that we have about our public hearings. We will have a public hearing on the proposed code that will be at our first meeting in September, on September 13th. For those of you who are here, you can please help us communicate out to the public that our plan is to come together and work on a workable solution. We do not want to be antagonists in this process. So the same people that rile people up, you can be the same people that bring us together as we move forward. That would be my ask, and we have some media who's been here, hopefully they can help us with that process. Is there anything I'm leaving out, Bill? Our meeting is gonna be at 9:00 a.m. on September 13th, that's a Tuesday, at 100 Cherokee Street in Marietta. Do you have any parting sentiments, Commissioner Gamble or Dr. Jenkins?
Oh, just please, all haulers, if you haven't done so already, please sign in and leave your contact information. And I believe, as the county manager said, if you let me know that you want to be involved in the ongoing discussions, we appreciate that also.
Thank you. Commissioner Gamble, do you have any sentiments this year?
Just thank you for being here.
Thank you, and Dr. McMorris? Thank you so much, and thank you, Dr. Jenkins.